Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming out this evening. And welcome to the Monday, February 20th, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting. The first item this evening is an invocation and pledge of allegiance. As always, I invite any members from the audience, if they'd like to come up and lead us in an invocation and pledge of allegiance, they may do so. Since no one's jumping up, I'll ask our Vice Chair, Commissioner Jarvis, to do that for us this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for another glorious day in Currituck County. We are just so blessed to have your presence all around us in this beautiful place that we call home. We ask your guidance tonight. We ask your wisdom tonight as we do the work of the people of Currituck County. Guide us and help us put your will first. In your name we pray. Amen.
Applause. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and the faithful with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next up this evening is the Ethics Awareness and Conflict of Interest Reminder. And our county attorney did such an awesome job last time.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna leave it with her going forward.
All right. Here we go. Pursuant to GS 153A44, a commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the board, but may be excused from voting on issues involving the commissioner's own financial interest, official conduct on matters on which the commissioner is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234 or 160D-109. In accordance with Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances, it is the duty of every commissioner to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any commissioner have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the Board of Commissioners in this meeting? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict.
Kevin, did you do anything this week?
No, not that I know of.
No? Go ahead.
I'll go after her.
I did consult, excuse me, I did consult with the county attorney today concerning a possible conflict. I'll let her.
Yes, Commissioner Etheridge called me this morning to see whether he had a conflict regarding the public hearing tonight. I believe his son is, works for this particular, this applicant. And my opinion was that could present a conflict of interest, so he will be recusing himself.
Okay. Thank you.
I purchase sand from Thrasher Sand Mine on a regular basis, from actually from his family member. So is that a, I mean, it's not the only person that I use. I mean, I just wanted to put that out there. I mean, I buy groceries at Food Line, and we have a new grocery store. I'm probably buying groceries there, too.
Oh, I think.
No, I think that's fine.
I mean, if it's a regular basis, though, is it?
No, I don't, I think that's fine.
We're gonna conduct business with people in this county.
Right.
It's whether or not you didn't, you didn't take any money from them.
No, I give them money.
Do you have a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that's not susceptible to change? A fixed opinion about this matter?
No.
Before, okay. Any undisclosed ex parte communications?
No.
Okay. Any close familial business or other associational relationship with an affected person or financial interests in the outcome?
I mean, I've ate lunch with his son, Pope, multiple times. I mean, that's, I mean, like I said, I do buy sand from them, so I just.
You share a grandson.
I do not think that rises to the level of conflict of interest.
Yeah, that's true. I just want to put it out there. Thanks.
Thank you both for that. So when we get on that, I'll ask the board to, for motion to recuse you from participating in that.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? Can I, any changes to the agenda this evening? Can I have a motion for approval, please?
Can I move it?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next up is public comment. When you come up to the, to the lectern, please state your, your name and address for the record. And as always, you have three minutes. We'll have a light system to tell you as your time moves along. And that is open to the public. Anyone out there tonight that has not signed up, I'll give you an opportunity a minute. The first person to have signed up, I see walking up, is James Memes.
All right. My name is James Memes. I live at 105 Chestnut, just down the street. Good evening. I like to first go on the record by saying this is one of those things that my father told me not to do. Just like a few other times in my life, I'm not going to listen. But just like many, I believe this is my civic duty. Let me state something that often gets overlooked or not done. I want to thank each of you for what you do. Many of you are prominent members of our community, law enforcement officers, own small businesses, and have been part of our growing community most of your lives. Your hard work and dedication, excuse me, your hard work and dedication to the citizens of this county and those venturing to reside here doesn't go unnoticed. Each of us appreciate you. With that said, there's many issues facing us that have been voiced time and time again through dialogue on social media and local community events. It's time now to wait and rest the dialogue and get to work. We've continued to see our one small town of dirt roads, farms, and homegrown goods, with Sammy Walkers being our main hub, to now homegrown, to now imported fruits and vegetables, reduced grids on grocery store shelves, traffic unable to spread out and consistently remains congested because of the multiple lights from Sonic to Border Station, hundreds of homes being placed on what was once farmland, spawning Dollar Generals in hopes to appease the residents, 40,000 square foot minimum lot size for new subdivisions, schools becoming overcrowded, schools yet to be accredited, and absolutely no accountability to the builders for the entire communities they are bringing to our county. The taxpayer, the residents, are paying for the reduced supply of grocery store shelves, fire trucks with extended reaches, the farmland that's being sold to build entire communities, rent costing $2,500 because it's now a norm to buy a home on .33 acres for $350,000. And we all know with these communities comes higher taxes. I'm not coming at the mom and dad selling their farmland to whoever they want. I'm coming for these buyers that want to bring an entire community and profit from the hardworking taxpayer, you, me, and us, without also providing the increased infrastructure needs within our community on their dollars, not ours. When you purchase the farmland that provides goods to the people and place a community on it, you bear the burden of providing the goods that farmland once did for us. You shall pay for the grocery store sufficient enough for the amount of people you're providing homes to. You need to pay for the expansion to our schools. You need to pay for the larger ladder truck required to reach your homes if you build your homes above height requirement. We don't want to become the next Norfolk, unable to sustain enough law enforcement to keep the people of our county safe from ruthless criminals. We're already witnessing increased crime. I'm gonna place the blame where it belongs, and that's on the individuals coming and building within our town. Accountability to the builders for increased infrastructure, reduced traffic lights to decrease traffic congestion, five acre minimum lot size and new subdivisions, safety, homegrown goods, a pharmacy, no taxes on work farmland, and accredited schools. That's what the people of this county want. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I do not have anyone else signed up this evening. If there's anyone else that would like to comment in the audience, you can come forward at this time if you'd like to. All right. Seeing no one else coming forward, I will close public comments. Move on to the next agenda item, which is Commissioner's Report. And I'm gonna bounce around a little bit tonight. Kevin, I'm gonna throw you out there first this evening, sir.
You'll put the green light on. No, I'm just kidding.
We got you, Kevin.
There you go. You got me. I appreciate it. Not a lot, really. Like I said, if you watch the news and all the stuff going on in the world today, it's crazy. And I'm thankful for where we live. I know James brought up some valid points of some stuff. It is a great place to live. There's, nothing's perfect. But that being said, I mean, like I was watching, reading the story about the, the mother that was shot in front of her children over a dispute in a grocery store parking lot. I mean, what kind of world do we live in today? It's, it's just disgusting. So like you said, you can complain about it on social media or do something about it. So I'm gonna put this out there that this Saturday, weather permitting, if it's pouring now, raining, I'm not gonna go, but I'm gonna go out for two hours. And anybody who wants to, instead of going on social media and complaining and stuff like that, I'll challenge them. I'm, I'm gonna meet at the Tolbs Bay Clubhouse, 10 o'clock till 2, till 10 o'clock to 12 o'clock. There's two miles left of trash to pick up from the last pickup where we got about 80 bags. So if anybody wants to show up and help, there's some on the far end by Puddin' Ridge, by the elementary school, is a lot. And then some by Wedgewood. So I'm gonna hit those two areas. So instead of posting negative comments or attacking businesses or whatever on social media, I challenge them. I'll buy them lunch if they show up, as long as it's not like 40 people, I hope. But no, I'm just kidding. But no, I'll provide drinks, whatever. I know it is supposed to rain Saturday, but Tolbs Creek Road looks a lot better. And instead of getting on your phone and typing some negative thing about the county where you live, those people know, and I'm not calling anybody out, know who they are, but come on out for two hours and help pick up trash and make your county look better. So that's this Saturday from 10 to 2, and I will be in the parking lot at the Tolbs Bay Clubhouse in Tolbs Bay. So that's it for me.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Under the red button.
Come up, yes, come out and help Kevin out. He's got a little campaign toy for you next time. All right. Owen, how about you this evening, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I went down to the open house that Congressman Murphy had this past Friday night. And I did tell him we wanted him to come back to Currituck and follow up on the meeting we had with him back in the fall. I attended the Alamo Commission meeting last week, and they've got some stuff coming down in terms of grants that I believe Mike Irvin, the executive director, is gonna get with Leanne about coming before us and making a presentation. And the last thing that I'd like to do is the Moyocks Elementary School parking lot. I spoke to the county manager earlier. I'd like for us to approach the Board of Education about trying to come up with some additional parking lot to the south end of the parking lot this Saturday day. It doesn't have to be asphalt, to just give a parking place because traffic is backing up on Tolbs Creek Road to go in to pick up kids in the morning and drop them off in the afternoon. They're from the railroad track, at least, to the turnoff. And then they're down Tolbs Creek Road, a good quarter of a mile, just stopped on the road. And I think there's enough space there, they could put something in there that people could drive off and park and catch that and get them off Tolbs Creek Road.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something to the county manager on that? I know one thing where we've talked about doing this, to his comment, those fields, like during soccer season, you have a fall and spring soccer with the county, the soccer season, there's 18 teams this year in the seven to nine range. So like, a lot of those fields are used for practice. But we have the 20 acres off of Moyock Landing where there's tons of area. If we could possibly maybe move a couple of those soccer goals, like where he's talking, I don't want to take anything from the kids, but if we relocated a couple of those goals through Parks and Rec, which myself and Jason Weeks talked about that, they could probably extend that and not take from, you know, because they need the area for practice. But we have tons of land where we can move some of those goals.
That's a bigger issue. It sounds like we probably need to involve DOT and get Selena on them because she can make stuff happen there.
There you go.
But we need a turn lane, probably an extended turn lane in both directions to widen the road through there to accommodate the traffic flow.
And one last thing. I attended the Area Soil and Water Supervisors Meeting. County Manager Ike McCree was there. And the presentation by NEET, the Northeast Aerodynamic School over in Pastank County. Very interesting presentation, and it's another alternative method to education that they're providing. And it looks like they're getting good results from it. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Bumma.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I spent the last two days with family outside. And there's something about no cell service that is, that is a blessing. I know you experience it on a fairly regular basis. I would like to encourage our residents, take some time, go outside. Leave your cellphone at home. You know, we spent, my wife and I went on a 3.2 mile hike with four grandchildren, the youngest of which were five. And that was uphill both ways. No, the first half was downhill, which was a bummer because that, we paid for the uphill coming back. But what a blessing, what a blessed time. Currituck County has a lot to offer with outdoor recreation. We have parks that you can go play in. We have trails that you can go walk on. And folks, don't bring your laptops with you. Don't bring your phones with you. You know, just go out and enjoy the great terrain, the great country that we live in, the great county that we live in. There's a lot to do outside. And it is good for the soul to go for walks. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mike, how about you this evening?
This evening, I have nothing.
All right. Ms. Kitty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the Commissioner's serving on the Social Service Board, I'm pleased to announce that Currituck County Social Service has applied to participate in an Elder Protection Network Training Program provided by the UNC School of Government. The training is focusing on developing a multidisciplinary team, MDT, in Currituck for the purpose of protecting older adults from abuse, neglect, and exploitation. The county has been accepted and invited to attend a two-day workshop on March the 2nd and 3rd. This workshop, with all the lodging and everything, is completely free, paid for by the School of Government. A representative from the following offices will be attending to support the initiative for Currituck County Social Service, Clerk of Superior Court, the Sheriff's Office, District Attorney, Senior Citizen, Albemarle, Albemarle Area on Aging. We look forward to the MDT team working to protect our older adults in this county. Today is President's Day also. It's the day to celebrate our founding fathers, Washington, Jefferson, Lincoln, and also to honor former commanders in chief. Our prayers go out tonight to our oldest living president and 39th president Jimmy Carter and his family in his last days. We not, we may, we may not align with his politics, but President Carter has lived a life of a true servant of God. May we all strive to be a service and to serve. Quoting President Carter, "I have one life and one chance to make it count for something. My faith demands that I do whatever I can, wherever I can, whenever I can, for as long as I can, with whatever I have to try to make a difference." End of quote. We should all strive to do exactly the same thing. He was a man and is a man of true humility. Also tonight, we'll be voting on establishing an opioid task force for Currituck County. And I'd like to personally thank our Vice Chairman for all her hard work on this endeavor. And on a personal note, I have some health issues, and I probably won't be attending the next couple of meetings. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am. Selena?
Thank you. Along the same vein as Commissioner Etheridge's, it's nearly March for Meals time. And this is a time when, starting on March 22nd, 1972, President Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 and established the National Nutrition Program, commonly known as Meals on Wheels. These critical programs have delivered more than just nutritious meals to homebound seniors. They allow people to put eyes upon their elderly and regularly check on them as well. Even during the pandemic, Meals on Wheels continued. We did Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And early last summer, they returned to the five days a week. And with that, as always, we need volunteers for these important programs throughout our county. I challenge my fellow commissioners to volunteer at least one time next month, and our fellow citizens to do the same. I always say that it is the best thing I do all month, and it really is. The gratitude, the knowledge, and just the sheer love that these people have and express to you when you come and deliver meals is just overwhelming and fills my cup. And finally, today is the day we celebrate the birthdays of two of our presidents, George Washington and Abraham Lincoln. But I also want to give a shout out to another great American, my beautiful mother, who turns 82 today. Her model of faith and hard work and tireless devotion to others is one that I strive to follow. So happy birthday, Mama. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'll be a little long-winded. I've been seeing it being that way of late, so I apologize in advance. I get exempted from that for the huge paycheck I get to sit up here in the center, that extra bump. Last week, Saturday, I actually spoke with Senator Bobby Hanig on several subjects. He's, he's a hard guy to get a hold of. He's pretty busy this time of year. And he wanted to, first of all, send his regards to the Board of Commissioners and to the people of Currituck County. He is working diligently with us and nine other counties in his new district. So he's getting his, his arm wrapped around that. And in that conversation, and this goes to one of the points that Mr. Memes made this evening when he came up here, it was impact fees. He had been asked to look into impact fees. He hasn't really had the opportunity to, to really think about that in his tenure. So this was during the short session, which was last year. And so the reality is, impact fees are usually assessed on developers or builders for everything under the sun, or can be. But we can't really do that. And we don't do that. And there's been some misinformation put out on social media about this, that we are in fact, or he's going to put forth a bill to do impact fees, because he's got a call from a builder about this. And no such thing is, is going to occur. This Board of Commissioners has not discussed that. We've not looked into that. There's no intent to do that. We have a land transfer tax fee that, that you pay when you sell a home. That goes towards capital stuff, things like schools, maybe a new roof for this building, new windows for this building, things of that nature. So that land transfer tax fee was put in place, and I believe, Owen, you were probably part of that discussion when that took place, to, to help mitigate the cost of expanding and growing in the county. So that is there for us. And it, over the last few years, we've had a lot of money come in, and it's been put to good use here in the county, and will continue to be. So I just wanted to clear some of that up about impact fees. And we don't, we don't do that. We don't use them. Other states use them. I believe they're illegal in North Carolina for counties to, or it's very limited where we can use those. Is that correct?
There's been authority taken from counties by the, and cities by the General Assembly. Now we are allowed to assess what they call development fees for water and sewer infrastructure, but we have to every five years go through a.
Right.
An analysis of what the, what the cost of those fees should be and what rates we can charge.
Right. And it's not, that's not based on a whim. It's, it's through that cost analysis.
That's correct.
That we decide a rate fee for doing things like sewer. Matter of fact, over the last couple of years, we have had to go through that process. So we hired a lobbying team this, this past year as well, something we've not had in the last several years. And they've been hard at work for us, and met with, with Bobby and Representative Goodwin, both of whom represent us here at Currituck County. And one of the things that is getting ready to happen is a coastal caucus. And the reason, one of my reasons for, for selecting this firm was because they represented most, several coastal communities, and they have the same needs that we have, generally speaking. They have problems with erosion. They have all the same things that we have issues with. So it seemed to me a great fit, and it gave us the ability to tap other markets for support for things that we may need here. And having this, this coastal caucus come to fruition, which has been in the works for some time, is, is a great thing for us potentially. And, and other coastal communities to build a coalition to get things done that meets our needs here regionally. This past week, I spent a couple hours with our Development Services Director, Mr. Kemp, and, and I see one of our employees out there, spent a couple hours with her as well. So thank you both for the time. I learned a lot from you both, as always. And the county manager and the county attorney were there. And in my last Commissioner Report, I talked about the Board discussing lot size and development and all the things that were mentioned this evening here during public comment. And so we're, we're gonna be getting language coming forward to us around those things. Now, it's gonna take some time for that to happen. They, we want, we need to properly vet that. We need to have lots of discussions on it because it's gonna have implications going down the road. So we need to, to take our time and do that the correct way. But the biggest thing, I think, that came out of that was the Board's willingness to look at larger lot sizes as it pertains to development, as a tool to slow down development or have less houses on a particular plot of land, looking at other areas of the county where we can concentrate development, push commercial development, and things of that nature. So over the next couple, several months, we'll be working on that, and you'll see those things coming through. One of the things I'd asked, have been asked about is doing a moratorium. Can we just stop that until we get to that point? And we cannot do that. There, there's no avenue forward for us to have a moratorium on just stopping building until we sort all this out. So what's in the pipeline essentially can come forward, and new projects can come forward. The one thing we do have as, as a tool is to not do rezoning. If we don't allow rezoning and, and keep the maps the way that they are, that is one way that we can slow down growth or these higher density neighborhoods, like was mentioned this evening. Let's see here. The other thing for the Board is I'll talk with staff briefly about the Moyock Small Area Plan. We hear it all the time. Most of developments seem to take place in Moyock. And I want to do a work session with the Board of Commissioners to just review that plan. It's been a while since we've actually sat down as a board and gone through it and what's in it. We see it, we hear it, but just putting it all together at one time with us to look at it, and then we may decide that, from what we've heard, it doesn't meet what the community wants anymore. Or we take it back out to the community again and do an update on that plan to really reflect community views. Small area plans are great for that. That's what they're designed for. So that will be happening as well sometime in the coming year. So all these things, we've heard you about development, and we're taking it seriously. So just be reassured that we're not gonna let that drop. And that's it for me this evening. Thank you for letting me rant for a few minutes.
Mr. Chairman, can I add one thing that Ms. Kitty Etheridge added? The program she's talking about, I attended that training a couple of years ago. And I was just, in my other capacity, we've had, it's crazy how many seniors are frauded. I mean, there's so, there was, I read a report the other day, and I'm not gonna say anybody's name or any dollar figures, but I'm talking about probably in 2023, close to probably a half a million dollars of people have been frauded from these scams of these people that are sitting home, not working, and then scamming somebody who's worked their whole life hard. And like I said, so people check on your parents or your grandparents or whatever because it's, they're, I mean, they're, I read one the other day, and it just floored me. It was, this guy was good. It was one of the best ones I've ever seen. And they hit somebody hard for a lot, I mean, a lot of money.
Yeah, that's bad. That's bad. Thank you, sir. All right. Mr. Manager, Ike, what you got this evening?
Couple of things. First of all, it is budget time again. All the departments submitted their budgets last Tuesday, February 14th. It's a tradition, apparently, in Currituck County, departments submit their budgets on February 14th. So we'll be going through that and eventually bring to the Board for discussion at some work sessions about the proposed budget for the next fiscal year. And then, as Commissioner Etheridge said, I did attend the Soil and Water Conservation Dinner Meeting last Thursday night. It was Currituck's turn to host it at the Cooperative Extension Building. It was good, good turnout from area counties and. a billion dollars of people have been frauded from these scams of these people that are sitting home, not working, and then scamming somebody who's worked their whole life hard. And like I said, so people check on your parents or your grandparents or whatever because it's, I mean, I read one the other day, and it just floored me. It was, this guy was good. It was one of the best ones I've ever seen, and they hit somebody hard for, I mean, a lot of money.
Yeah, that's bad. That's bad. Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Manager, Ike, what you got this evening?
A couple of things. First of all, it is budget time again. All the departments submitted their budgets last Tuesday, February fourteenth. It's a tradition, apparently, in Kirtuck County. Departments submit their budgets on February fourteenth. So we'll be going through that and eventually bring to the board for discussion at some work sessions about the proposed budget for the next fiscal year. And then, as Commissioner Etheridge said, I did attend the soil and water conservation dinner meeting last Thursday night. It was Kirtuck's turn to host it at the Cooperative Extension Building. It was good turnout from area counties and a good presentation from the Neat Charter School in Elizabeth City. Very interesting. Their concept is actually a performance-based learning type of method. So it's interesting to hear what that means and how their students are performing, utilizing that form of education. And then lastly, I'll be out of the office Wednesday through the end of the week at a Coastal Resources Commission and Coastal Resources Advisory Council meeting in Ocean Isle Beach. One of the rules that will be considered during those meetings is the replacement of septic tanks seaward of the vegetation line on the beach. So they're going to finally, I think, address what you're going to be allowed to do, particularly in the public trust area on the beach, with regard to relocation or replacement of septic systems and drain fields. So that should be interesting discussion and see what the CRC does. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Moore?
Yes, thank you. Last Monday, Commissioner Etheridge, Chairman White, and County Manager and myself, we attended oral arguments in Raleigh for the occupancy tax litigation, and I thought our outside counsel did a wonderful job with his argument. I thought that went really well. This morning, I attended Superior Court for a code violation case with Kevin Poole as the defendant, which I'll be discussing more at length with you all next meeting, but I think it went well. So that's all I have.
Thank you. All right. Next up is administrative reports. First item this evening is a comprehensive financial report for our fiscal year 2022, and we have Madonna Stafford of Carr, Riggs, and Ingram to present that, I believe.
Karen Kraus, Deputy Finance Officer, will introduce our auditors first.
Thank you so much, Board, for having this on your agenda. For all of you that know me a little bit, I am really excited about audits and those kind of things. So it always is a fun time for me. I don't know that everyone would say that. Madonna, who is our partner in charge of our audit, is very technically one of the experts that I've seen with and I've worked with. So it's a pleasure working with Madonna. And if you could come up and say a few words, we'd love to hear from you. Thank you.
Good evening. I hope you're all doing well tonight. I'd like to first just say thank you for allowing me to be here with you tonight to go over your June 30th, 2022 financial report. Like to start off first just by recapping what we were engaged to do and what our objectives were. That really is summed up kind of with three main points. The first being, we were engaged to perform a financial audit and express an opinion on whether the financial statements as a whole were materially correct. And we conducted our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards as well as government auditing standards, and pleased to say that we issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements as a whole. So basically, this means it was a clean opinion, and we found nothing materially wrong with the financial statements. For reference, the opinion letter is on pages nineteen through twenty-three of your audit reports. I'd also like to point out one additional item on the opinion letter. On page twenty-two, there's an emphasis of matter paragraph that will discuss a restatement related to the implementation of Gatsby eighty-seven for leases and another restatement under Gatsby seventy-five due to funding the new Leo and OPEB trusts that were put in place for fiscal year twenty-two. The total restatement was approximately $7.3 million for the year. Our second objective was to perform a single audit testing over all of your major federal programs for the year and express an opinion on whether the county complied with all direct and material compliance requirements related to those grants. For the county, a major federal program is determined by expending $750,000 or more during the fiscal year. For fiscal year twenty-two, the county had two major federal programs, and those were medical assistance and the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. This is also often referred to as your ARPA money. We issued an unmodified opinion on compliance over both major federal programs this year, and basically that means we found no compliance issues, no deficiencies, and no question costs to be reported. Our report on the major federal programs is found on pages two thirty-two through two thirty-four of your audit report. And our third objective for the year was to perform single audit testing over major state programs for the year and express an opinion on whether the county complied with the direct and material compliance requirements related to those programs. So for the county, a major state program is determined by spending $500,000 or more in the fiscal year. For fiscal year twenty-two, we had two major state programs. They were the Public School Building Capital Fund and the E-911 grant. Once again, we were able to issue an unmodified opinion over compliance on these grants. And similar to the federal report, this means we didn't find any compliance issues, question costs, or deficiencies to be reported. And the opinion letter related to state programs is on pages two thirty-five through two thirty-seven of your audit report. Moving on, I would like to take a few minutes and point out a few of your financial highlights for the year to recap, and we'll start on Exhibit Two, which is on page forty-one of your audit report. The net position for the county in total for both your governmental and business-type activities increased approximately $27.7 million for the year and ended the year at $256,551,386 after the restatement. This is about $2.5 million better than what we saw in fiscal year twenty-one and was mainly due to increases in your governmental revenues. Primary increases were your property taxes for $4.8 million, sales taxes about $1.7 million, occupancy taxes $1.2 million, and your operating and capital grants increased $3.8 million. And related to the capital grants, the big portion of that was your ARPA money. Land transfer taxes for the year did decrease about $1.7 million, which offset some of your other revenue gains. And on the expense side, your total expenses for your governmental activities increased about $6.4 million in response to these increased revenues. Your largest increases for your expenditures was for education and general government. Looking at your business-type activities, the net position for your business-type activities increased almost $4 million for fiscal year twenty-two. Total revenues on your business-type activities was $2.2 million increase due to the rate increase and consumption increases. And on your expenditures, those increased $1.2 million to offset that increased revenue. So overall, I would say the county ended the year on a positive note across the board with all funds and had another excellent year. Just one word of caution, well, I mean, the last two years have really been record-breaking for the county. There are a lot of upcoming large projects, you guys are all well aware of that, between infrastructure and school projects and those sort of things. So you're in a good position to meet those needs, but certainly that's big money and big projects coming down the way. I also want to spend a minute and just look at the general fund with you, since it is your largest fund and most important fund for the county. Those numbers are on Exhibit Four, page forty-four of your audit report. The general fund fund balance decreased about $2.3 million for this year. Your revenues increased $6.3 million, with the largest increase once again coming from your property taxes. Expenditures also increased about $6 million with this increase in revenues, and the transfers to other funds increased about $11.3 million. The transfers increased related to these upcoming school projects and other various projects that you were in preparation for. Also, I wanted to point out your ratio of unassigned fund balance to your total expenditures. This is one of the primary indicators that the LGC monitors very closely. Your unassigned fund balance in the general fund was $20,998,499 that you're in, and that represents 35.87% of your general fund expenditures. This is consistent with your last year's ratio of 39.84%. It's only about a 4% decrease, but still fairly consistent between the years. For comparison, the LGC recommends maintaining a minimum ratio of 20%, and just the average across the state with other counties is about 39%. So as you can see, the county's in good shape as far as the LGC's minimum and pretty much in line there with the other averages across the state as well. Also, I want to take a quick look at your property tax levy analysis on page two oh four of your audit report. The overall levy for the year increased about $4.8 million due to the revaluation that was performed. There was about a 20% increase in the tax base. And then your tax collection rate actually increased slightly over last year's and went to 99.34%. This is one of the best in this state and something that you guys should be very proud of. That's an excellent rate, and you're able to maintain that year after year. One final note I would like to mention is the performance indicator worksheet that we have to send in with the audit every year to the LGC. This is just a new tool that the LGC put in place last year to monitor areas of weakness and concern that they want to keep track of. The county had one performance indicator for fiscal year twenty-two, and that was that we didn't get the audit submitted before December first. Primarily, this was related to the implementation of Gatsby eighty-seven. This just ended up taking a lot more time than we originally anticipated and just went from being a fairly small, manageable project to a much larger project as it continued to grow during the implementation process. So we were a few weeks late getting the audit in. In regards to that, you guys are required to submit a written response to the LGC on how we're going to address that going forward, and the finance officer is working on that letter, and we'll get that taken care of. So everyone's aware of that. Other than that, we had no other concerns or internal control deficiencies to communicate. Everything ran really smooth this year. I would like to thank Sandra, Karen Kraus, as well as the entire finance department staff. They're always very helpful and very accommodating to our requests, and we're most appreciative of their help. If you guys have any questions, I'm happy to address those.
I just want to say thank you to you and the county manager for the staff. I mean, just shows how the county is ran professionally, and we're good with the money and everything, and look at all the services and all the stuff we have compared to other counties. So keep up the good work, and thank you for your good work, showing that we're doing good work.
Well, thank you.
That all works for me.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I like that 99.4% collection rate, because when I first came on this board, we were down around 94, 93, 94%, and we were having a lot of money leak out from not collecting it. But commend the staff on getting that where it's at.
The number one in the state on that collection rate?
You're one at the top. I won't say number one, but you're right up there at the top.
Got to get another 10 to 12%.
It's very close.
We can get there, right.
And it stays there year after year. So that's very impressive.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
On page twelve, if I was the general public reading it, and it says during the past year, the ad valorem tax rate increased from $6 billion, da-da-da-da, to $8 billion, an increase of 20.13%, which reflects an increase in construction within the county. If I'm just the general public, I'm thinking that the increase is from new construction, which is close to $1 billion in construction. The 20%, which I think is back on another page that you said was when we revalued. If I'm the general public and I'm reading this, it reads to me like it's from construction. I had a problem with that.
Okay. I mean, definitely a valid point. I understand. This actual section of the audit is prepared strictly by management, so we don't really audit that. That's just management's comments to add to it. But I definitely do understand where you think that, you know, there could have been a better wording choice made there.
It's very disingenuous for the public to read that, if anybody's looking at it.
It should have been stated that it was an increase in the value of properties. That was the cause of that 20% increase.
It was a revaluation.
Which, you can change your audit letter now, but we can certainly make clear to the public that that is not construction in and of itself. While that is part of it, it is overall the increase in value of property.
Right.
And at our last meeting, it was stated that we have no debt. Explain to me the difference between long-term debt and just non-rated debt.
Well, we have very little debt, but we do have debt right now on the Public Safety Building that we're paying back. That was constructed through an installment purchase financing agreement. And then we do have some debt from our enterprise funds, our water system. But other than that, we don't have any debt in terms of borrowing.
Because I've got a few phone calls about it.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the board? All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next up is public hearings. Item one, PB twenty-two dash twenty-three, Thrasher Mine. Elba Road Farm, Inc. requests a special use permit for the continued operation of an existing sand mine at 144 Lazy Corner Road in Moyac, in the Moyac Township. And I believe I need to swear some people in this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I asked a question.
Oh, that's right. Sorry, that didn't, yes, we do need a motion to...
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Etheridge.
I asked a question on his thing when we talked about it earlier. It's a duty of ours to vote and per, I guess, the state, whatever. We've had this discussion because I've asked when I used to do some county work in 2012 for the county. If his family, like his son doesn't live at his house, his son, like I could see if it was, you know, I thought it was like your immediate household. Or is it one grade back?
I think to the general public...
Oh, yeah, but I mean...
It's better that he's accused himself.
Yeah, and really, this statute is a close familial business or other association or relationship with an affected person or financial interest in the outcome.
So...
I think particularly the issue is whether Commissioner Etheridge's son would have a job.
Right. If he voted against you.
If this permit was not continued.
I got you. I just was curious. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay. Thank you. It's been a while since we've been down that road. All right. So anyone that's going to offer testimony this evening needs to be sworn in on this. We have some babbles up under the lecture. All right. Everybody babbled up? All right. Left hand's on the babble, right hand. Do y'all solemnly swear that testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you, God? Thank you all. All right. Mr. Kemp, good evening. All right. Mr. Kemp, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, and members of the commission. As you heard, this is a special use permit. It is for an existing mining operation. Just to give you a little background, this mining operation was first approved in November of twenty, of nineteen ninety-nine. And then an expansion was approved in December of two thousand and thirteen. What is before you is a new special use permit. The reason why it is before you is the previous special use permit expired on January first, two thousand and twenty-three. So there is no change to the proposed operation of the mine. The mine is located in the northern part of Moayak. More specifically, it is just to the east of the county's wastewater treatment facility. Here is an aerial of the site. The site is three hundred and eleven point six eight acres, approximately one hundred and twenty, which is used for the mining operation. The site is zoned agriculturally. The use as a mining operation is a permitted use in the agriculture district, of course, with a special use permit. Showing here is the plans that were approved with the expansion in two thousand and thirteen. The cross-tach area is the area that was expanded. I will note that not all of this area has been mined since the expansion. This area right here to the west of the power lines and the extreme north of the site have not yet been mined. I will note that right now the mine to the north does hold a three hundred foot setback from Winslow Road. This is required per the ordinance. When that additional area to the north is mined, there will need to be a reduction in that settlement setback, so they are requesting a hundred and fifty feet. The reason why this requirement wasn't in the previous use permit was that in two thousand and thirteen, there was not this requirement. This requirement was put into the UDO in two thousand and fourteen. Here is the two thousand and twenty-two exhibit that was submitted with this application. The blue line surrounding the site here, this outer line, shows the limits of the current state permit for the disturbance area. This inner line, it's tough to see a color. It's kind of a green pink line. This is the area from the top of bank for the existing mining oper, operations. The access to the site is from Lazy Corner Road. It's a thirty-foot wide accessway here. All setbacks, hundred-foot setbacks, all setbacks are met around the property. And the reclamation plan is for it to be a pond, possibly for future residential development. Here is a graphic showing where the existing in-use wells are surrounding the site. There are two wells within fifteen hundred feet of the site. Those are in that circle. There are additional wells further west down South Mills Road. However, they are outside of the fifteen hundred feet. Here's an image showing what the site was in two thousand and three and two thousand and twenty. As I said, the initial use permit was approved in nineteen ninety-nine, so the image on your left shows the initial mining operation. After the expansion in two thousand and thirteen, you see what it is today on the image on the right. The Imagine Currituck Two Thousand and Forty Vision Plan designates the site as G-three mixed-use center and corridors. The applicable goals and policies for this mainly address the secondary impacts of the mining operation, particularly protection from surrounding land uses, that is, except land use policy two point six. I will briefly go through these. Land use goal one is to consider the design and location of intensive and potentially incompatible land uses to mitigate compatibility issues. Land use policy two point six, which does speak to mining operations, is to minimize residential development that would expose residents to harmful effects of incompatible land uses. For example, noise, light, or odor, or dust, and it does reference operations such as mining. Environmental goal one is to preserve and protect the county's environmentally significant and sensitive lands and surrounding areas. And finally, environmental policy one point one, preserve coastal and non-coastal wetlands and repair and buffers for their natural resilience and benefits. The site is also located, as you mentioned earlier, Chairman White, it is in the Moayak Small Area Plan. It is mostly zoned full service. There is a small area at the southern part of the site, right here, that is zone conservation. This is where there's existing wetlands on the site. There are fifteen point three six acres of existing wetlands. However, no development or no land disturbance activities are proposed or will take place in that wetland area. The Moayak Small Area Plan also speaks really to the secondary impacts of compatibility between new and existing development for use such as mining operations, and this future land use map policy speaks to ways to avoid adverse impacts. Some of these ways include larger setbacks, landscaper-forested strips of land, transition zones, fencing, screening, density and/or bulk step downs, and other site planning measures that encourage harmony. The technical review committee reviewed this application and made the following four comments. The first is that the county engineer recommended that a performance guarantee be posted for the two in-use wells within fifteen hundred feet of the property. The recommendation was three thousand dollars per well for six thousand dollars total. The second comment was that the applicant shall meet all the requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance. The third was that conditions from the previous special use permit carryover. Those two conditions are that access to and from the site shall be from Lazy Corner Road and that Newtown Road should only be used if a lot on Newtown Road is being serviced. The second condition from the previous use permit is that the fire department may use the fire pond for, or the pond for fighting firefighting purposes. The last one is that the special use permit shall be valid for a ten-year time. So with that, I will leave you with the special use permit review standards and stand by for any questions.
Questions for the board?
I have a couple of questions. The, how many mining or total wells, modern wells? I know there's two, you said in that circle, and there's a, is there a couple more further down the property?
I'll turn to Donna for this.
There are four.
Four, okay.
Four monitoring wells on the site.
And then one quick question. I know they've used it before, the fire departments have, for the ponds, for the water. Is there something? I know it's locked on the weekends or whatever. Is there like a code or something that our fire departments have? That might be a question.
I'm not aware of that, but maybe the applicant or their representatives might be able to answer that.
I know we used it before, but it was like a Monday through Friday thing, just.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure if there's, you know, access for the fire department when it's not open.
That's it for me.
Thank you.
I'm just kind of curious what, and I guess it'd be for the applicant, what we were drafting water out of.
That is a good question because they do have a de-watering process in that mine.
I get that, but. I thought it was, and I might be, I might be incorrect. I thought there was a pond. Don't, and.
Let's, let's get the applicant.
We'll, we'll let the applicant come up. I think there is a pond.
Speak to their operations, so. All right. Anything further for Mr. Kemp? Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Chairman.
For the record, I'm Don Morrison. I'm attorney for the applicant of Twyford Law Firm offices in Moayak in Elizabeth City. Sir, with regard to the county engineer's recommendation for the six thousand dollar bond.
Yes, sir.
That is a new requirement. That didn't exist previously. Is that correct?
Well, previously, there was a report done in two thousand and thirteen, so they did not have to post any, any bonds.
All right. You were talking about the engineer's report.
Yes.
The applicant's engineer's report. And that report has been resubmitted, has it not, from Mr. Bissell?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that report sees no need, doesn't see any, any problem?
There were no updates to the report.
Okay, but there's nothing changed. I realize it was a two thousand and thirteen report, but there's been nothing changed in the nature of the operation?
Correct. Nothing changed in the report of the operation.
Now, as to the county engineer, did he issue a report with an analysis of why the bond was needed?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, might as well stay up here. I'm assuming you're going to be qualifying witnesses for this.
Yes, sir. I'm going to put on a very small dog and pony show, I hope. Okay.
Appreciate it.
If I may, just as a matter of privilege on President's Day, I would like to commend Commissioner Etheridge for your comments on President Carter. I know probably most of us are different political parties or political tribes now, unfortunately. But I saw the best comment that was attributed to him, and if I may, I'd like to share that with you. He said, "We are mostly remembered by three symbols on your tombstone," because fifty years from now, nobody remembers much. And these three symbols are the date of your birth, then there's a hyphen, and the date of your death. You have little to no, we have no control over the first symbol when you were born. You have little to no control over the second symbol when you die. But that hyphen, which is your life, is completely in your control. I think President Carter gets an A on hyphens. Thank you for allowing me to say that, and thank you again for bringing that out. All right. Let me bring our engineer up first, please. All right, sir, would you give the board your name?
Sure. My name is David Clubbitt. I'm a registered professional engineer with Bissell Professional Group located in Kitty Hawk, North Carolina.
And where did you receive your education?
At Old Dominion University.
And you took a bachelor's science in civil engineering there?
Yes, sir.
And when did you detect that?
In two thousand.
Okay, and you subsequently had graduate studies at Old Dominion in civil engineering as well?
Yes, sir.
And are you licensed by the state of North Carolina as a civil engineer?
Yes, sir.
And how long have you been so?
Since two thousand and fifteen.
And are you in good standing with the licensure board?
Yes, sir.
All right, and you're currently, as you said, an employee of Bissell Professional Group?
Yes, sir.
You've also previously worked for the Army Corps of Engineers?
Yes, sir.
And in particular on hydraulics?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you've gone back and worked for Old Dominion University Research Foundation? And approximately how many projects have you worked for mines, sand mines?
Oh, on sand mines, I, I believe it's five.
Okay, and you're very familiar with this project?
Yes, sir.
All right. Now, show you what I'm going to ask to induce into evidence. That is your curriculum vitae?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If I may, I'd like to attend to this and offer Mr. Clubbitt as expert in civil engineering.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Is he so received?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Clubbitt, I'm going to get out of the way now. You take us through what's going on, but one, one point. What we're asking for here is not an increase in the hours of operation.
Correct.
Not an increase in the volume of production, not an increase in area subject to mining, not an increase in traffic or anything like that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that.
So as stated, this application is simply for a renewal of the existing mining permit that expired on January first of this year. We are not requesting any modifications or changes to what was previously approved in two thousand and thirteen. No changes in operation, no changes in the limits of excavation. The mine holds a permit with the state of North Carolina that according to recent rule changes with the state of North Carolina is valid in perpetuity. To my knowledge, the mine is in good standings with that permit. To my knowledge, the mine is in good standings with the use permit that it did have with Currituck County from nineteen ninety-nine until January first of this year. You know, in general, that's an overview of what we're, we're asking for is simply just a renewal of the permit that was previously issued for this mining operation with no changes at all.
I'd like to direct your attention to the county's recommendation of the six thousand dollar bond, three thousand feet of the two wells. Am I correct in understanding that the purpose of that bond would be if any damage is done to adjacent residential wells?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Now, you've worked on this project for how long?
Probably fifteen years.
All right. To your knowledge, has there ever been any pollution from the mine affecting these wells?
No.
Or any other wells?
No.
All right, in two thousand and thirteen, when the permit was amended, Mr. Bissell of your firm did a study on the potential for pollution of adjacent residential wells, did not?
Yes.
Okay, and that has been reintroduced to, to the staff as part of record?
Yes.
All right, now, that was way back in two thousand and thirteen. Why can we rely on that today?
Because nothing has changed and, yep.
All right. Well, you said nothing has changed. Let me ask you, in, do you have a professional opinion as an engineer, working for the Corps of Engineers, working for a hydrology? Do you have a professional opinion as to the likelihood that these existing mining operations could in any way pollute the residential wells?
Yeah, I do not believe that they will.
All right, and how far are the residential wells away, not just from the mining operation, but from the property line?
They are approximately twelve hundred feet away from the mining operation. I don't know exactly how far from the property line.
Okay, all right. Now, would, is it, in your area of expertise in rendering an opinion, would other experts, so somebody situated, reasonably rely on Mr. Bissell's report of two thousand and thirteen in forming an opinion today?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so would you, and to, to this study, have you inquired of the county engineer as to why he thought the bond was necessary?
I did.
And when did you do that?
Shortly after the technical review meeting, comments were presented to us. I don't remember exactly what day.
Ballpark figure. We're talking about.
Maybe several weeks ago.
And you reached out to him by what method?
Email.
Okay, and what was the topic of your email?
Specifically explaining why I felt like the performance guarantees were unnecessary in this application.
And did he respond to your email?
No.
And as of today, do you know of any engineering reason, any public safety reason for requiring this bond?
No.
All right, thank you. Now talk to us about the setback, please.
Before we jump into that, I have a couple of questions on that front. So they have monitoring wells around the property, four of them, as was mentioned earlier.
Yes, sir.
There, are those wells tested for anything? Are you aware of what they're tested for?
I believe they're primarily looked at in monitoring the elevation of the water table.
So chemicals were brought up as things that could be in the water, but you don't have any knowledge of any chemical testing that's going on in those wells?
I do not.
Okay. So you can't say then whether or not that could affect drinking water? Because none of them, no testing's taken place. I mean, there's chemicals in use. Would you agree with that? There's, you got heavy equipment on there that have hydraulic fluids and motor oils. Anybody that's had a tractor knows it leaks. I've blown hydraulic lines on my bulldozer, on other equipment. Now it's in the ground where they're mining, extracting the sand, right?
Right.
Dump trucks are coming in and out, et cetera. So there is a potential for chemicals there.
Well, there's certain, certainly there's a potential for chemicals.
So I just, I just wanted to be clear that, you know, the testing is done. In fact, all it is is monitoring the levels of water, not what's in the water.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, can?
Yes, sir.
Well, that kind of goes with the question I was just going to ask, listening to your statements. Are you stating that there's absolutely no way, never will, never can be, any contamination to wells?
No.
You're not saying that?
No.
That it could be?
Sure.
Okay, because I thought it sounded like earlier you said there was no reason to have any concerns with the wells, with the current conditions. Okay, no, that's okay. I just want to clarify that.
So what's, what's the, if there is even a remote chance that these, that chemicals and things could leak into the ground, what's the rationale for not doing the performance guarantee? What, what burden does it place on the applicant to have a performance guarantee, I guess is the question that I have? It seems like it would allay and kind of puts to rest some fears of the nearby homeowners.
If I may ask him some additional questions in response to you. Is there anything in the?
Is there anything in the UDO that requires, that mandates, that says, "In this situation, you must post six thousand dollars"?
So the ordinance has two provisions regarding this matter. A, either you provide a hydro geological report.
Stop right there, have we done that?
Yes.
Okay.
Or B, you provide a performance guarantee and you install monitoring wells. So we have prepared the hydro geological study, we've included that, and we have installed monitoring wells. So we've done, in a way, we've exceeded the requirements of the ordinance.
And as we speak, as we are here tonight, has this hydrological report been challenged?
No.
Okay, now, a very reasonable question was asked. You're not saying that it's impossible that there could be a pollution, but that's sheer speculation, isn't it?
Yes, I mean, I can't say it's not impossible.
All right, and engineering is a science, right?
Yes.
Do you rely upon speculation in forming your opinions?
No.
Okay, now, as to damage, this would be six thousand dollars in cash that would sit with the county until such time as there is, the mine goes out of business and we get into subdivisions, is that correct?
Correct.
And I don't know, is that six thousand dollars garnered interest? Okay, all right, all right. But anyway, the applicant has to come up with six thousand dollars now on speculation that is not required by the UDO. That would be our, our position. If we had an engineer's report saying, "Yes, there's a likelihood," I would change my tone. But we don't know what the basis of that recommendation was. We do know you've got a report, and that report has been ratified and brought up to date. This is the hydrological report.
Yeah, I have a question, I'm sorry, go ahead. Kevin, what? My, my recollection of the purpose of the performance bond was for wells that failed, that basically through the digging and the de-watering, the well failed. Am I remembering, not contamination, not, just to, because that's part of the de-watering, is to lower the water table, is that correct?
Correct, yes, the performance guarantee is money when, to, if the well fails, to replace the well to the status that it was before, to the working order.
Providing water to the residents that no longer have water.
That is correct.
So in my way of thinking, and I'm certainly a big fan of clean water, so that's neither here nor there. But I think in the context of this, we have a, we have a mine that's been in operation for a couple of years, twenty-four?
Twenty-three.
Okay, close. So it's been in operation for twenty-three years. We've not had any wells fail because they've been accurately performing it. And so, again, I, the purpose of that was that people didn't lose their water supply. And so, that, that's my recollection.
I believe it was in the report as a reason for that. You are correct, but when I started talking about chemicals, it was like, wait a minute.
Got it, and, and I, and I appreciate that. But, but going back, that's the reason for the hydrology analysis, is to speak to what's underground, how the water's flowing, all of that.
Correct.
And is there a chance that the wells go dry? If there is, in absence of that report, then that money's put in place, anyway.
Right, got it.
If I may, in light of Commissioner Beaumont's very astute remarks, which made me look like an idiot. Does, yeah, I wasn't hopeful to do that.
That occurred today.
Does this change your opinion that there's no need for the bond? Has there been any indication, and does Mr. Bissell's report, which has been reintroduced, in any way suggest that these wells might run dry?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Just to provide some additional clarity, one of the two wells, according to the well records that we obtained back in two thousand thirteen, excuse me, one of the wells was installed in two thousand and ten. So it has been in operation in existence for twelve years now, and there's been no reports of any issues with that well. So that's, you know, a, a supporting reason why we don't feel like there's a need for a performance guarantee to cover that well. The other well in question is immediately adjacent to it. They're literally on two adjoining pieces of property, probably, I don't even know, several hundred feet away from each other or less.
And, and a question for, who, relative to, I guess, who else are you having from a, a technical witness? I have a question about the use of the water, so I don't know if that's an engineering, an operational, or safety.
I would suggest an engineer.
Got it, okay. It may be, my question may be more operational. Do you have somebody coming up to speak to operations?
This gentleman is familiar with the operation.
Okay, that's fine. So are you, are you aware of where the fire department is pulling water out of the, the mine?
I am not, sorry.
And, and let me just tell you, the reason for this is I'm just familiar enough with MSHA to be really, really, really dangerous, right? So my question is, and for those that don't know, MSHA is the oversight of mining in the country. It's a federal, and if I go south, somebody correct me. But they oversee what you can and you can't do in a mine. And they are, they make OSHA, right, look like Cub Scouts when it comes to the, the real deal. So my question is, I'm a little concerned if we've got fire trucks rolling in on them.
I thought there was a pond at the front, that's where I was going with that.
That would be fine if it's, as long as it's excluded from MSHA. But I'm telling you, when you go in the.
Oh, yeah, not to go deep back in the.
But MSHA has a boundary, and, and I know from brief interaction, I'm disturbed. I, I've gotten real questions. If they're in the threat, if they're within the boundary of the mine, they have to be compliant with MSHA. We should not be having fire apparatus at all inside the mine.
That brings up a good question. If they're going in there, where are they going to do, does anybody know?
I guess that might, maybe for CC, isn't there, don't you all have a pond at the front right there?
Yes, I mean, there's.
Not even be on their property, I thought there's a pond right there.
But if the fire department doesn't know any better, would they go back there? Yet that's.
Well, we'll just put that in there of them not going back there, how about that?
It, there's no houses in close proximity to this.
It would be to draft water.
Right, right, for shuttling, but, yeah, but we've got plenty of lakes around Moyawatto.
If I may, the owner is perfectly willing, they've, they've been here a long time, they're a good corporate system.
Right.
They're certainly very willing to help the fire department out. There's no evidence here for us by what.
Got it.
They will comply.
Mine was mostly anecdotal, and, and so my question now will go back to the fire department, thank you.
All right, now, before you leave, Dave?
Yes.
We also need an amendment on the setback, is that correct?
Not from what was previously, previously approved, correct.
There was something about, it's been previously approved, so the three hundred and one hundred and fifty, that's, that's offset.
Correct, there's, the new ordinance requires different setbacks.
Okay, so we're good on that, all right. Thank you, I have one more witness, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Dave, any further questions?
Yes.
I think we're done, thank you, sir, appreciate your time.
All right, so would you give us your name, please?
Ken Tate, Lieutenant Appraiser.
And you are employed, employed, Mr. Tate?
Real State Appraiser.
And where do you live?
I live at ten ninety-three Waterlily Road, Corn drop, North Carolina.
All right, if you speak directly into that.
Sure.
Okay, now, are you a licensed appraiser?
I'm a certified appraiser.
And how long have you been certified?
Certification went in in the early nineties, so since then, but I've been appraising for over forty years.
All right, and are you familiar with this project and the extension of it?
Yes, sir.
Have, have you formed an analysis of adjacent property and how it would be impacted by continuation of the existing well?
Yes, I have.
And what did your analysis yield?
My analysis yielded comparison of properties adjacent to mining operations and properties not adjacent to mining operations, there was no impact difference between the two.
And that would be the specific project, not just in general?
Yes.
Now, I would submit this witness, I think he's running under the board, I would also submit this witness as an expert in appraisal.
Accepted, thank you.
Okay, accepted, all right. I would open him to any questions from the board.
Comments, questions, concerns? This is gonna be the easiest job you've done in a while, thank you.
That would be the showing for the applicant.
All right, thank you. All right, anything further for Mr. Kemp this time? Okay, at this time, well, I'll open up public comment. I have David signed up. David, I'm assuming you're good on public comment? All right, get my glasses on for the rest of this. Carl Jones, if you'd like to speak this evening, you can.
Good evening, Commissioners and ladies and gentlemen. My name is Carl Jones, and I was raised in Moyawatto, Newtown section, and I am the elected spokesperson for the neighborhood there in Moyawatto, for Newtown, which is Nicholas Village. And during the years this sand pit has been there, Mr. Thrasher has been very instrumental in giving the people sand, field dirt, and everything. Well, as you know, the area itself goes down a hill from the farm, and it causes water to run back in the neighborhood. And a lot of houses have had a problem with seals rotting because of the moisture. Excuse me, and, this is, when they first started with this project, which was the satellite project of this shore here in Currituck County, it started at Newtown. And they had a limit on how much sand or field dirt that Mr. Thrasher could give the residents. But with that being said, he has taken that limit off and said he would supply anybody in that neighborhood with sand, field dirt, to build up the area, which is a good thing because it keeps that runoff from running back in the neighborhood. And so, with that being said, but mind you now, all of this dirt is free. All they have to do is say, "I need four or five loads," or whatever they need. And they're on it right away. So with that being said, if you guys could find it in your heart to approve this use permit, then I'd appreciate it because it helps my neighborhood. And as long as we can build up, save some of these houses from rotting under the bottom, that's a great thing. Thank you very much.
Good evening, sir.
And I have two other homeowners back here too, so you might want to hear from them.
Before you leave, sir, Thrasher Mine also employs eight Currituck County citizens, is that correct?
Who?
The mine employs Currituck.
I, I don't know anything about that, sir.
But you're, you're satisfied that it's been a good corporate system?
Yes, 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 sir. Another thing I might say, with the trucks, he's been very instrumental in keeping the trucks off of Newtown Road, load. They don't allow them to go down that road, so that's been very good, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, I have Elijah Griffin?
Yes. Good afternoon.
Good evening, I did, we did need your name and address for the record, because you didn't write it down.
My name is Elijah Griffin, and I live at one forty-seven Newtown Road.
Thank you, sir.
In Moyawatto.
All right, appreciate it.
And I'm here to speak on behalf of the owner of the pit, Mr. Thrasher, Mr. Thrasher, if I pronounced that right. Anyway, you know who I'm talking about. He has been a great asset to the community as far as giving us dirt, and not only helping us with dirt, but monetarily wise, he's helped the elderly. We have some disabled people. Matter of fact, I'm a disabled vet myself, and we have had no problems with him. He's a very fine gentleman, outstanding gentleman. And he has supported our community in helping to elevate the property. The landscape of the property has had some problems. As a matter of fact, I just spent thirty thousand dollars putting new joists under my house. But he has contributed to the upbuild of my property, and it's helped it a lot. It has helped my land to dry out a lot. And for you to not pass this, it would be really a disadvantage to the community. But if you would just, you know, give from your heart. Giving is always a blessing, and we all are aware of that. God put us here to give to one another. And those of us in that community are not people that have a lot of finances. Our finances are limited, and he has been an enhancement and to, and helping us to build up our land. He would also send, he's got a, oh, I forgot the machine that, with the blade that.
Grader.
Grader, grader machine that he would, he sends up there. If we needed to grade our, our, our land, don't charge us anything. And anytime we need dirt, all we have to do is say, "Mr. Thrasher, I need a load of dirt." And he don't wait two weeks later. If you ain't ready for that day, he'd be, he, he better get ready, because the truck will be there.
It's gonna be in the wrong spot.
Not, here he comes. So I appreciate, we would appreciate it very much if you all would just please extend it to him. It would help us so much. And so, we don't have all the financial means to pay for dirt. And by him being there, he's been such a great help to us. And if you would do it, we would appreciate it. The Newtown community should appreciate so much. Thank you all so much for hearing me.
Thank you for coming out this evening, appreciate it. All right, Clinton Jones. You're gonna go? All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate y'all coming out this evening. I don't have anyone else sign up, is there anyone else that would like to speak to this this evening that's in the audience? All right, seeing no one, I will close the public comment. And any further discussion from the board? I'll open the floor for motion.
I'd like, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve PB twenty-two dash twenty-three, Thrasher Mine Special Use Permit, because applicant has demonstrated the proposed use meets the Special Use Permit Review Standards of the UDO. The board must include conditions, we don't have to read that part, we'll skip that. It's not highlighted on there. Special use, review standards worksheet, the use will not endanger the public sa, health or safety. Obviously, as presented by the, the community there, it actually helps the public health and safety. I, I would like to remove the, the staff recommendations, if we can put that, the.
Two forty-nine in the agenda.
Two forty-nine, hold on, pull that back up. I would like to remove the, two things. Remove the performance bond, it hadn't been an issue since, and I'm sure if something did drastically happen, I, I know they would make it right. But I would like to see that, that removed, as well as Commissioner Beaumont's statement on the, the fire department. The pond, I'm thinking of it, I don't believe it's on their property. But don't have them going back there getting any water, because there's plenty of other means to get water if needed off of South Mills Road. The use will not injure the value of adjoining and abutting lands, and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. Use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plans. Imagine Currituck twenty twenty vision and plan. To the TRC comments, just remove the two that we stated, the performance bond. I'm trying to find them on my. Oh, they're just TRC comments, all right, yeah, just those two things that I added, and everything else I'm good with.
Okay, we had to add in the fourth, the use will not exceed the county's. Okay, we have to add in, uh, the fourth, the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities.
Public facilities.
And we do need to cite, uh, a couple of things in support of this, which is in the agenda packet, um. Pardon me.
Excuse me, did, are you saying remove, did you say remove all the TRC comments?
No, 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 no.
Or just as two?
No, I'm, I just was referring back to those. No, no, I was just referring back to those.
You can't remove TRC comments.
Yeah.
Uh, Kevin, page two forty.
I should have said that properly.
Two forty-nine, Kevin has the.
I'm trying to survive, computer's a little slow on the scroll. Forty-nine, I'm scrolling up here.
So we've got, uh, land use goal one and land use policy two point six. Environmental goal one and environmental policy one point one. And in the Moyoc Smiley Area Plan Policy FLU one. If you'll accept those as part of your.
I'll accept those and I appreciate that because I'm still not to scroll up to the two forty, whatever. And that's my motion with what the chairman added.
The, uh, use will not exceed county's ability to.
For adequate public facility.
Alright.
Yeah, I'm still at two fifty something. I'm almost there.
Alright, uh, do we have a second for that this evening?
A second.
Any further discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, hearing none, it's unanimous. We'll take a brief recess and, uh, we can let Commissioner Owen come back in.
Welcome back. Let's get this, uh, party finished up this evening. Want some new business this evening? Item one, the demolition ordinance, um, one fifty-one.
My name's Bob. Alright, demolition ordinance of, uh, one fifty-one Newtown Road, White Ayers in Moyoc. And I believe our county attorney is gonna be.
Yes.
No relation to me.
Nope. Um, okay, so this is an ordinance directing the building inspector to demolish the structure that's located at one fifty-one Newtown Road in Moyoc. This went through a condemnation proceeding before the chief building inspector for issues, structural issues with the home. It's uninhabited, no one is living there. And they had a plan for them, for the property owner to demolish the structure or have some kind of plan to repair the issues, which has, that deadline has long since passed. So here we are, um, and now it's before you to order the county to take action and demolish the structure, um, pursue it to Article four, chapter four of our code of ordinances and NC general statute one sixty D dash one 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 nine.
Any comments, questions, or concerns from the board? I have a motion for approval?
Hold on one second.
Oh, there is a comment.
And this is, uh, what is the definition of demolish?
I think tear it down and remove, is that what you're, remove the materials from the property?
Doesn't mean just put it all on the ground. It means.
It, get rid of it, take it off the premise. Yeah, that's right.
Is, is this one that maybe the fire department could use for a practice burn?
That I don't know.
It's, it, how, the home.
Save that expense.
The home that she's referring to, the condition of it is, I was down there the other day, um.
Probably bad enough, you don't want to be walking out, right?
It's, 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 it could have been demoed a decade ago.
Right.
Yeah, and, and Bill Noon's order, various defects, code violations, structural damage to flooring and roof, missing windows and doors in a state of dilapidation.
It's really bad.
Okay, it's really bad. Alright, we have a motion to.
Second.
Wait, who made it? Kevin?
I'll do the top. I move for approv- for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Alright. Uh, number two, demolition ordinance again, uh, V-bomb on Knott's Island.
Yes, so this is the same kind of ordinance that was just before you. It's located at one twenty Tomlinson Lane in Knott's Island. Again, it's uninhabited, went through a condemnation hearing before the chief building inspector with a plan to repair or demolish, which, which didn't happen. So now it's before you to order the county to do so.
Okay, thank you. Any comments on that one?
It's been vacant for probably seven or eight years.
Okay.
Motion for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. Number three, recommendation reward of Sound Park Boat Ramp and Bulkhead Repairs. And with that, we have Mr. Beckham sliding up to the mic.
Alright, so tonight you have before you the recommendation of award for the Sound Park Boat Ramp and Bulkhead Replacement Project. So this is the replacement of timber boardwalk decking for three launch piers, new anchors, and repair of the southern lane of the boat access ramp. This is a formal bid, the first bid opening, we received one bid. So we did not meet the three bid minimum, so the bid, the project was prebid. One bid was received again. The responsive bidder is Seaboard Marine. Consultant Ardua recommends that, uh, recommends award of this project to Seaboard Marine. Staff concurs. And we also request delegation of contract execution authority to the county manager.
Alright, thank you. Comments, questions, concerns?
Um, once this is approved though, how quickly is this expected to take?
The construction period is one hundred and twenty days.
I want to thank staff for your hard work on this and seeing it through and to, to get to this point. I know I routinely get asked, uh, when it's gonna be fixed. It, you know, I think everybody assumed that it would happen last year. And I always say government doesn't move quickly, just be patient. So thank you for helping me to answer that question and I look forward to moving this project along.
Well, with that, would you like to?
And with that, I will make a motion for approval.
Thank you. Owen? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright.
Thank you.
Next, a resolution to establish an opioid task force in Currituck County. And with that, we have Commissioner Jarvis again.
Okay. Um, back last summer, Kitty and I went to both the National Association of Counties Convention in Colorado. And we, I also attended the NC ACC State Convention in Concord or Cabarrus County, North Carolina. At both of these, uh, there was a great deal of focus on the opioid settlement that had come down. And, uh, there was much discussion about options and how it could be spent. Uh, what was the most advantageous way to spend it? And we heard from a speaker who wrote the book Dope Sick. It's also a, uh, a documentary on one of the platforms, forgive me if I can't remember which one, I believe it's Netflix, that, that traces the history of the opioid crisis in America, uh, which has led to this opioid settlement. So one of the things that a lot of counties were doing was pulling together interested and knowledgeable community members to put together a task force to discuss how best to utilize that money to help the most people in an area. Uh, and taking notes from that, I, I talked with the county manager and I really just appreciate all the work, uh, that you have done on this to help move this forward. I've, I've thought about it a lot. I contacted quite a few people. Everybody I spoke to said yes, um, but a lot of people didn't call me back. So it took a while to get together a task force. And, uh, I'm really pleased, uh, with the direction of our knowledgeable county staff, the, uh, members who have agreed to be on it, uh, that we will be able to do a great job with this. So, uh, I'm gonna just read part of the, uh, resolution here. Uh, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners for the county of Currituck, North Carolina as follows. Section one, a task force to be known as Currituck County Opioid Task Force is established and charged with the study, evaluation, and recommendation to the Board of Commissioners with strategies to address and remediate the consequences and effects of the national opioid epidemic in Currituck County. Section two, members of the Currituck County Opioid Task Force shall be Selena Jarvis, Vice Chair, Currituck County Board of Commissioners, Kevin McCord, Currituck County Commissioner, Ike McCree, Currituck County Manager, Megan Morgan, Currituck County Attorney, Sandra Hill, Currituck County Finance Officer, Samantha Hurd, Director, Currituck County Department of Social Services, Kaylee Bynum, Peaceful Waters Counseling, Denise Corey, Our Epic Project, Allison Scholler, Currituck County Schools Task Coordinator, Ashley Stoop, Director, Albemarle Regional Health, Billy Cottle, four H Youth Development Restitution Coordinator, Reverend Vince Rodkey, Pals Point Christian Church, and Dr. Barbara Courtney, retired.
Alright, thank you.
Oh, sorry, there's one more. Uh, section three, Currituck County Opioid Task Force shall organize itself following chapter two, article division two, Article two, division two of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances in sections two dash one hundred and two dash one oh one of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances.
Thank you. And with that, um.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Is there a sunset on this, like when the funds run out? Because there's a second round of funding coming from like CVS and Walmart and pharmacies. Are we gonna sunset this task force afterwards?
Well, I think what we contemplated, and, and the first wave is eighteen year payout period. But what I would contemplate is that this task force would do its work, bring forth its recommendations for the county, um, and other agencies. And then there's really no more work for the task force to do at that point. Then it's up to the county and this Board of Commissioners to adopt resolutions identifying the different areas in which, and ways in which we're gonna spend these opioid settlement funds.
Does that, uh, meet your way of thinking?
That's what I was thinking about.
It may, it is an advisory board, um, you know, and, and if you look at the list of names, we have medical professionals, we have mental health professionals, uh, we have, uh, religious professionals. We have, certainly have governmental professionals. Uh, and I really, uh, think that the, the point of this is to make recommendations. I don't see it being a long drawn out process. Uh, it's mainly a brainstorming group, a brain trust, if you will, on what we can do and maybe hear about what other areas have done that has been successful.
Yep, good group of people.
Yep. I'm pleased.
Yep.
Okay. Would someone like to move to approve this resolution?
I move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Oh, I think Owen dropped that first.
Everybody's second.
Owen jumped in first, that would count as all in favor.
Aye.
Alright, I don't think we need a nae count on that one. Um, uh, lastly, as a consent agenda, any comments or concerns, uh, about anything in the consent agenda this evening? Have a motion for approval, please.
Somebody?
Second.
Kevin? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Alright, uh, at this time, I'll recess the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners and open a special meeting of the Tourism Development Authority. Uh, we had just have one item, I believe. Three seventy-four. Ocean Sands. Let's see, where is it at?
It's three seventy-five.
Oh, so that's right for the ball fields. Um, and then when you say ball fields, in this particular case, uh, Ike, this is for our.
Baseball field.
Our baseball fields over at the.
Yes, that's correct.
Yep.
Alright, that are definitely for tourism use. Alright, uh, well then, in that case, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Now have a motion to adjourn, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, now reconvene the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners and moving, uh, to go into closed session pursuant to GS one four three dot three one eight dot one one A three to consult with the county attorney and to preserve attorney-client privilege in the matter entitled Ayers v. Currituck County.
Did we get a second or not?
A second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.